Good evening, it's Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand and five. I'd like to call to meeting, I call to order this special meeting of the Norwalk Council. If you please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our innocent spike. And if you will please remain stand. Like to have a moment of silence for our colleague Reagan, who will not be joining us this evening. And the mayor's remarks session tonight will be allow, uh, we'll ask the council member to share their thoughts and stories about Reagan.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Lajewski.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yeah.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Winters Strand.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
We have fourteen in attendance. We have a four.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, are there any corrections, deletions, or omissions noted? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted. Opposed? Extentions?
Abstained.
Mr. Frayer abstains. Uh, motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes or acceptance of the minutes of the special meeting of August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Missing us? And are there any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of acceptance of the minutes as submitted. Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Don't see anybody in the audience that they want to address the council, but is there anybody virtually, James?
Diane LaRocella.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council Members and Staff. For the record, my name is Diane LaRocella, twenty-one, Little Fox Lane. Uh, I wanted to join all of the council and the mayor in, uh, that moment of silence for Greg Burnett. I had many conversations with him over the years. The reason I'm speaking tonight is I wanted to, uh, offer my advocacy and, um, hope for approval of the pledge for the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy that, uh, Ms. Jody Trendler had prepared. I read it. Uh, and it does commit the city to moving forward on many of their intentions. And I think facts and data are what are important in making sure we move ahead. So therefore, um, in the land use and building management items, item E, one, A, and B, the West Avenue Fire Station. I was very pleased that solar panels and, um, storage will be, uh, I believe not if, but will be, um, part of that design and build. But I wanted to ask you all to go further. Um, over the years, I have advocated for all of our firehouses, especially the newer ones. And of course, Chief Yost, the Chief Yost Building, to include clean energy, energy efficiency, as much as, as we currently have, and also that there are grants available. And we've missed out on some of those grants because of our policies that I hope and wish will be improved. I ask that there be a consideration in the design build for the use of heat pumps for helping with the HVAC. Uh, solar and, and solar and, uh, storage is, is great, and it's something I've asked for for many years, and I'm very pleased that this one has that. But I do believe we can go further. Uh, one of the things implied in the pledge for global covenant is of mayors is that we also look at net zero planning, and that means you have to start at the beginning of planning any renovation or, or new buildings. Renovation of old buildings, construction of new buildings. With net zero, which I have talked about over the years, you have to start in the beginning of that planning phase. So I do think that a heat pump review, I'm not asking for geothermal, although that could be utilized too. It's just more.
Thirty seconds remaining.
There's currently tax breaks that will be over within, within a month or two, and I'm hoping that heat pumps will be included in this particular West Avenue Fire Station. Have a good evening and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else, uh, virtually?
There are none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Then we will close public participation. Uh, next on the item, uh, next on the agenda, appointments. Um, as you can see, we're nominating Sharon Torres to be hired as the Chief of Human Resources and Personnel. As most of you know, that we're quite some time now, we haven't had a full-time human resource person. And it's caused some very, very difficult situations. Um, and we appreciate, uh, all that Tina Fogle has done for us. And she is moving on and, uh, we are recommending Sharon Torres. We had, um, we hired a search firm to do a nationwide search, find the right person for the position. Uh, she was one of two finalists. Uh, we interviewed the two finalists and it was recommended that we hire Sharon. I know, uh, uh, Ms. Smith, uh, Mr. Seed, I believe, uh, Mr. uh, Goldstein have all had an opportunity.
And Ms. Young.
And Ms. Young.
Uh, and I'm sorry, and, and, uh, Ms. Young, uh, they've all had an opportunity to speak with her. Uh, I've heard nothing but good things so far, and I had an opportunity to interview her and talk with her. So I'm recommending her for, uh, appointment or hiring as the Chief of Human Resources and Personnel. So any comments or, uh, like a motion?
Some of them.
Mr. Goldstein, uh, any comments or discussion? Mr. Goldstein.
All I just want to add in the mayor's summary is absolutely right, but a number of us did have a conversation with her. She's gone through a multi-round interview process. I found her to be very capable and someone who can absolutely take on this job. Um, she also has her own public, interesting public service backgrounds, including being the mayor of the Marinerk, New York, um, which is a part-time position, as I understand it. Also, my grandmother is a longtime Marinerk, uh, resident and a fan. So, um, I look forward to supporting with her and working with her in the future.
Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'm just thankful that we are at this point. It's been a long time, um, coming for the city and for employees. And I think we need this position filled a long time ago, but now we can move forward in doing what we need to do to make sure that City Hall can accommodate and address residents in a meaningful and efficient way. And so we re- add to address, um, employees and their concerns and issues in a way that helps to create better relationships and communication within, um, with what we do in the city. So thank you. And, and I'm glad we were able to get this down.
Further comments?
And welcome to the board as well.
Further comments or discussion? I would just like to add that in addition to, uh, going through a rigorous process, uh, and coming out, uh, on top, I'd like to thank the current employees of our Human Resource Office who stepped up to fill the void and did a yeoman's job, remarkable job over the past several months, uh, taking on extra assignments, taking on extra responsibilities, uh, never a complaint. They're just, uh, happy to be there and they've done, as I say, a remarkable job in filling that void. So I want to thank them and I think they deserve a round of applause. And we have, uh, virtually Ms. Torres, if she would like to address the council.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to meet you. Um, I'm actually at another meeting right now, so I'll be jumping off in a few minutes, but, um, I really looked forward to interviewing with the City of Norwalk. I've worked there before and I've seen all the improvements over the last decade or so. Uh, so for me, this is just an exciting next step in being able to bring both my government experience and my human resources experience together. Um, so thank you, Mayor, and, and everyone else who interviewed with me and shared a lot about the city and the role. So very excited and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. You passed the first test. You unmuted yourself before you.
That was fifty-fifty, Harry. That, that was like a chance.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, you said someone had a question?
Mr. Sutton.
Mr. Sutton, you had a question? Did you have your hand raised or had? In the.
Oh, I was gonna.
You had a question in the focus. No.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry. We need to.
Yes, yes. So, uh, all in favor of appointing, uh, Sharon Torres as the next Director of Human Resources? Opposed? Extentions? Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Hey, that will bring us to, uh, reappointments, uh, to the Pension Board Trustees. I'd like to move them all in order, uh, at, at simultaneously. Uh, Richard Baskin, James Henderson, and Frank Nash, uh, and thank them for their service, but do I have a motion?
So.
Mr. Frayer?
And I'd like to say something about.
Please do.
Uh, first of all, I, uh, have known these three gentlemen, uh, probably for about, uh, thirty years or so. And I, I think that individually, they, they would be a tremendous asset, uh, uh, and, and I think that, um, but individually, each one of them, their backgrounds really stand out. Frank Nash, uh, who has lived in Roatton over thirty years, um, uh, has had, uh, he's been in the commodities business and self-employed commodities business for nearly thirty-five years. Uh, he's a naval veteran and before, uh, starting his own business was working for some of the biggest banks on Wall Street. Uh, James Hendrickson, uh, Jim Hendrickson is also somebody that I've known for about, uh, thirty-five years. Um, he, uh, graduated from Penn State. Uh, he also, early in his career, worked for Ford Financial. Ford Financial, everybody knows, back in the late seventies, was, uh, uh, the Cadillac of, uh, financial, uh, organizations. Um, the pun isn't. And I think he's gone on to, uh, uh, many other, uh, significant, um, uh, financial organizations, Mellon Bank being one of the ones. Uh, he, uh, did a lot of work in, um, in, uh, the, um, in the, um, got, in the financial organization, uh, of that bank. Um, finally, uh, Richard Baskin, um, is, uh, also more than forty years' experience in, in many financial institutions, um, specializing in, in risk assessment, uh, risk management and, and analytics. Um, all three of these gentlemen would, uh, are going to be significantly and have made a significant impact on our, on, uh, the Pension Board of Trustees. Um, and just a word about the, the Pension Board sets, uh, the manager policy and recruits the, uh, some of the managers that, uh, handle our money and, uh, has gotten to the point since these gentlemen have been on the board that, uh, we are now in, in such a really strong position where we've almost fully funded that, uh, that pension board. So, um, I think that, uh, it's imperative that we keep these people on board with us.
Thank you. I totally agree. Further comments? Ms. Shanahan?
Um, yes, I would like to endorse all of the comments that Mr. Frayer said. Um, these three gentlemen are highly qualified for this job and we're very lucky that they're continuing, um, on in their service. So thank you very much, Mayor, for convincing them to stay on their positions.
Further comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next in the mayor's remarks, um, I'd like the council to take this such, uh, section of the agenda and have the opportunity to talk about our colleague who has recently passed. Uh, but first I'd like to thank, uh, all our staff for the remarkable service that they prepared for Greg on, uh, Monday evening and yesterday morning. Yeah, and here it's proper that he was laid to rest. I'm sorry that he was, uh, uh, here at City Hall, which, uh, as most of you know, was like a second home to him. But our staff did a remarkable job, uh, in, in planning that. Also like to thank Miss Dixon, uh, for, uh, helping with the, uh, chair, which you notice is draped in black cloth. And present, uh, putting the, uh, purple orchid, which we all know was Greg's favorite color, uh, here as a, uh, memorial to Greg and, uh, uh, as you know, and I, I can't say anymore, but you know, he'd be missed. So anybody that wishes to comment at this time, I'll recognize you one at a time. Mr. Frayer?
Um, I met Greg in twenty seventeen when he was running for, uh, the at-large seat on the council and, um, I just remember I was there at the, um, uh, polling station handing out, uh, uh, cards for John McNairy. And I said, who's this guy? And he introduced me to Greg and I was so impressed with just his stature. I thought that why was he paying the money? He should have been on there long time ago. Um, then it turned out that, uh, I was also on the BET and, uh, met him when I was on the BET and, uh, he, we started a relationship then when we uh, found that we had a lot in common as far as our philosophy goes on financial, uh, operations. Um, and then when I got on the council, I got to see a more friendly side of him and, uh, we had a lot of conversation about being two New York City boys coming in and coming up to the, the woods of Connecticut and, um, and providing our, our, our feet up here. Um, we talked a lot about basketball, uh, being a Syracuse guy that he was and being one of the St. John's guy. We often could, uh, talk about some of the great games that St. John's and, and Syracuse had. It was real, just a very nostalgic time to be with him at that time. Um, and then I think finally, the, the, the one thing was when I did get on the council, um, he was, he was a guy that I felt I could really talk to and get some insight as to what's going on. Um, you know, I heard so much about the word mentor, mentor, mentor all the time. And I never thought too much about it, but he was a real mentor. He was a real mentor to me and, and I think that, um, you know, I really feel that I want to be able to walk in his footsteps at some point in my career if I get re-elected again, which I hope I do. Um, and I can continue the work that he started and, and the philosophy that, that he held and, um, I think it's really important that the city, uh, I think he said to Nicole, that Nicole followed money. It's, uh, it's really important that we keep our, our finger on the pulse of what the financial situation is with the city. And, uh, I think I learned a lot from him and I think that hopefully I can, uh, continue his work. Thank you.
Ms. Shanahan?
One of the things that I loved best about Greg was that we each had our own relationship with Greg. And it was all unique to, um, each one of us. And he didn't treat us as a group. He treated us each as ourselves. And so we all have our own stories about how we connected with Greg and, um, the things that we left about with him, things we'd like to share with him. And that's one of the things that I think is just such a strength of his is that he really sought each of us for who we were and, um, you know, he could be that straight man and he could be really tough with us, you know, on council of, uh, if we got our Ps out of our Qs or whatever, but he also had such a wonderful sense of humor. And like when he did this thing with his fingers and sort of pointed at you like that, he knew that he was about to burst into laughter and those green eyes would light up. And that's what I'm going to miss most about, um, him is that he had a wicked sense of humor and, um, oh gosh, it's gonna, we're really gonna miss that laughter. So I was very happy that I was, um, at the protest that several of you guys organized, um, that weekend and we both got there too early. We had an extra hour, so we walked around together. We had such a wonderful conversation. And, um, at one point he told me he was going to miss me on council, so I'm not running again. And he gave me the opportunity to tell him all of the things that I learned from him and how much I appreciated from him during my time on council, especially that first two or three months where he, he led me through financial processes and BET and, you know, he, he was, he was a mentor to us in so many different ways. And, um, for the new council people to come, this is going to be a huge hole to fill for, um, not having Greg there to mentor each of them. So Jim, I hope you get re-elected and you can help be a mentor to some of the finance people and the rest of everybody here. Pick up those mentoring shoes because we're gonna really, those are big shoes to fill and we're gonna miss.
I'm still going to say. Um, a week and a half ago, when we had the, um, remembrance on the field, I labeled him a giant with a big heart. And I just think that's still fitting. Um, Greg was a person that if you didn't get it right, he's gonna make sure you got it right. He would, um, our meeting start at seven thirty, he would be coming in very quick to seven thirty and sitting in his seat. And we would, um, exchange conversations on different things. I remember one day he called me and I was folding clothes. And he said, do you have a minute to talk? And I said, no, I don't have a minute to talk. What do you want? And he was calling me because he wanted me to vote for him. And I said to him, I'm not voting for you. He said, you're not? I said, no, I'm not voting for you. And he said, why? We went back and forth and we had this banter of why I didn't vote for him for leadership. And I said, it's, it gives somebody else a chance. How many times do you want to be the leader? Like you have to give somebody else a chance. Nothing's gonna happen. The, the, the building is not gonna burn down if you're not the leader. And, and this went back for about forty, back and forth for about forty-five minutes. And as we ended the call, he said to me, thank you for being a straight shooter. He said, with you, I, I never, I always know where I land. Thank you for being a straight shooter. And I said to him, thank you for keeping us on our toes. The true test of a leader is not what they do when the spotlight is on them. But a true test of a leader is what they do and how they interact. And most importantly, how they make you feel. And I could disagree with him. I could be mad at him. He could be mad at me. But when I had to ask him a question, when I was unsure what I was doing, he would always pick up the phone. When he was yet in leadership, he called me on another time and said, you're gonna be the new chairperson of Ad-Hoc Affordability. I was like, I am? He said, you are. So well, I can do it. You know, I'm always very confident. And he said, I need you to continue the work that I started. And I need you to be honest and true to the constituents in which you serve. And those little words made so much to me than anything he could have given me. Because he worked very hard to make sure we had that ad hoc committee because he knew that constituents were suffering and that that was a problem that the city had and we had to do something to address it. And over this last week, we've heard all of the accomplishments and all of the mentoring ship and all of the good things that Greg did. But he simply was a giant with a big heart. And when I walked in, uh, to the chambers today, I looked at the chair and I kind of nodded because my colleagues, we did well by him. We honored him. We took time to reflect about how he impacted all of our lives. And I would say he's in heaven shining down and, and, and telling us to go on to, all of us in our own ways, to be gi- giants with big hearts. So to Greg Burnett, the forever Omega, the man that loves purple, which is also my favorite color, I thank him for always being that giant with a big heart.
Awesome. Further comments or, we didn't think we were just going around. Mr. Seed?
Oh, my goodness. Uh, I met Greg fifteen years ago. Um, I was just a young guy that tried to be involved and he was sitting on the board, um, for a company that my mom worked for. And, um, he took time to talk to me about that. Uh, when I got about the politics or the NAACP, he helped me out there. But, uh, the biggest thing was, um, when I became a father, he called me and talked to me about that. When I came on the council, went to Diamond Deli and, um, he talked about your first job is still to be a father and don't forget about that and enjoy your boy and, um, his boys being the best thing in his life and to make sure that I maintain that my boys are the best thing in, um, in my life. And, uh, I went through like text messages and different things and we, our text message thread was not about, um, politics at all. There's a very few, maybe like make sure you're not late to the meeting or something like that. Um, but most of the text messages were about family. Is he on Facebook? I posted a picture of my boy. Or, um, I seen that he had his, his granddaughter's was born and, uh, he shoot me a picture. And, um, I think that's, that's the most important thing because we, we talk about a lot of politics and, and in this role, all of the stuff that he's done. Um, but I know Greg is busy and I thought that I was busy. But Greg, every day since he's passed, I've learned something else that he, he, he was involved in. And he has been involved in so much things inside the community and, um, I think in death, it's a time for us, um, to reflect on things and what we can do. And there's things like the mayor spoke about, um, the Salvation Army. And I think that we, as his colleagues, need to pick that up and make sure that we're out there, um, ringing the bell. Um, one of my finest videos that I found was, um, with, with Mr. Ernie Dumas, who, uh, former councilman. And Mr. Dumas said, like, he's always there. He never misses. And I think those are things that we can look at and you see, like, what else can we do? How can we, how can we honor Greg's legacy and, and fill the gap in this community that's such a big one that it's gonna take all of us and the whole city to fill. Um, how do we go and mentor a child? How do we ring the bell at Salvation Army? How do we go stand out in, in lines to help people? What, what can we do to, to make sure that, that the burden isn't felt, um, too heavily on our community and fill that gap? Um, and then I just ended, um, where if, if the rent paid for us to be on earth in service to others, then, uh, Mr. Burnett, rent paid in full.
Excellent. Yeah.
But I just, um, the first time I reached out to Mr. Burnett, it was about, um, affordable housing. And I had called him a few times, but he didn't, he didn't call me back. But then, when I got, I said, did you get my message? He said, yeah, I got it. And I said, what? But anyway, we started talking about housing because he didn't realize how much the prices were today for housing. And he was just like, I don't believe you. But anyway, I keep saying that, um, he was very faithful. As I said myself to people, I said, wherever you saw the mayor, you saw Greg. And so he was like, very, like your arm bearer. And everybody knew him in the churches. Um, he was, he makes me want to do this position a, a lot more stronger, being too diligent because see, he left a good legacy. I want to leave a legacy as well. So he's making me step my game up in his life. So I just appreciate it. Didn't get, I didn't have that long, um, you know, long time relationship with him. But, um, he was the backbone of this council. And I admire that, that he knew the rules and the regulation and I know who to vote to for stuff like that. So, um, thank you for this opportunity to speak about Greg.
Yeah, uh, I probably knew him the least length of time of anyone, but I got to work really closely with him, especially on finance. And, um, I think it was my first week on council and I'm calling the chairs of the committees that I was assigned to, trying to get an idea of like what's going on and just waiting through so much information. And he called me right back, set up a meeting with me. What's going on and just waiting through so much information. And he called me right back, set up a meeting with me. And I was kind of nervous and, you know, I don't know, finance, you know, I, I'm gonna have a long learning curve. I was kinda leading with that insecurity. And he goes, let me ask you a question. Do you have common sense? And I said, yeah, actually dude. And he goes, you pay your bills at home? Yes. Do you know how much you have in your bank account? Do you know how to look at? Like, he just broke it down in a way that made me. Relax and really, you know, be able to focus on the work. And he always said there was no, you know, no dumb question, no uh question that uh. That he appreciated the questions and I would, I asked a lot of questions. I read those packets. So that was my most interaction with him was on finance and I just. Right away respected his um, his incredible breadth of knowledge, his uh attention to detail. The way he would sort of have this kind of like gravitas about everything, but also this incredible heart and this flash of a smile. And the last day we saw him was uh Nicole and I were at the rally. And he gave the most beautiful, passionate speech about um immigrants. And it, it was so deep and so sensitive. I cried. And I'm just so grateful that I'll always have that uh memory of him giving that, that speech that day. And I just feel so honored that I got to know him and to work with him and hopefully to carry on his work.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank the city as well as Greg's family for providing such a magnificent service. For a magnificent servant. Uh without a doubt, Greg was an unusually kind person, I've found. Uh he was good-hearted, very principled. Uh he was an excellent leader, as well as an excellent follower. Uh Greg was a listener who was able to get things done. Uh it is clear that um our world, our global, as well as our local community. Could certainly use more people, more principled people. His parts are in the right place. May his legacy live on in this town and elsewhere. Thank you.
So um to me, Greg embodied professionalism, respect and true dedication to serve. He genuinely cared. And you know, the, the last conversation that I had with him was in person conversation was on the brain. And he was completely thrilled over the birth of my daughters. I mean, at that time, more than I was, because I was lacking sleep. But he had, he had such joy in his heart and pulls out his film and shows the pictures of his family, tells me that. You know, it's an amazing feeling to be called dad and stuff like that and changes your world. The world looks very different. Um so it's, it's, and I can still hear his voice in my head, because his voice was so distinct. But um he does leave a legacy and his contributions to the, to the seat, to the community are, are an example for, for all of us. So. I uh I'll surely miss him. Thank you.
And you know, I think that the selflessness with which he served the city for decades. I think as none of my colleagues have said, is really sets a bar for all of us. Um to think about the willingness to step up over and over and over again to, you know, give what you can give as much as you can. Um be willing to take on the hard tasks, be willing to um. Say yes when there's someone in need and figure out how you can, you know, use your skills to contribute that way. I think that, you know, Greg's legacy in that regard. Sets an incredibly high bar for what it means to serve. Uh I think that it is so admirable that. Um he was able to carry that on for so many decades with such professionalism and with such compassion. Uh and I think that we all benefited from his um stalwart uh attention to detail and attention to the city's finances. And uh I think leaves a legacy that he is very proud of in the city's AAA bond rating. And the ways in which our finances really are uh state-leading. Uh I think that that too is a, is a real tribute to, to Greg.
You know, as we go around this road, it, it's almost repeating the same thing. But I think, you know, if we just say it simply, he exemplified what it meant to be a community servant. In so many different ways, whether it was on a professional level, community level, Greg was there. And when he saw need, he stepped up to that. And what's interesting is the little stories that everybody tells about him. And how unique they are to the person. And it felt real. And he really knew, kinda got a sense of who you are or were as a person. And he responded that way. One of the, and I, and I can't remember actually how I met Greg. I, I really can't. But what I do know is that he um along with his frat brothers for decades. Um volunteered every Christmas holiday and every Thanksgiving down at the South North Community Center. Where um Basket of Love, Ernie Dumas and I and others in the community put on that event. And he made sure if he didn't hear from me, he called and said, what are we doing? You didn't ask for the money yet, you know, just because he knew and was committed to that. And he made sure that his frat brothers were there and that they participated every year with that question. And so that just speaks to his influence on other people and the fact that he um. Cherishes that, the moments that he creates with people. Um and I will always remember that. And, and, and you know, sometimes we gotta remember just the fun stuff. And we talk about his smile and his smile lit up a room no matter where you were. And even I think if you were mad, if Greg smiled a little bit at you. You kinda got over it a lot. And so I think that he just possessed something that was unique. Um and we will always treasure in our own way. And I think you said it, Mayor, and it always to me is worth being repeated. Well done, my good and faithful servant. And that he was.
Well, I gotta admit, I was startled earlier tonight when I re-announced the roll call and my name was the first name called on Greg's. That, that hurt. Anne used this word, but I'm gonna use it again. That man had gravitas. It's one of those things where you just kinda know it. You don't really know how to define it. But he was, he looked, when he walked into a room, you knew that this was a serious man. This was a formidable person who was, you had to take him seriously. And that was exuded by everything he said and what he spoke. I mean, he was someone who created and had great meaning in his life. He sat right over there and he used to have, I don't know if you ever saw, he always had the padfolio that was perfectly appointed. He always had a pen, right? The fountain, I think it was, it may have, wasn't a fountain pen, but it was a nice, heavy purple pen. Right in the middle of the padfolio. And every meeting, never, whenever he spoke, he had a printed paper with exactly what he wanted to say, on size a million. And, and he was always prepared and ready to go. And you knew that when he spoke, he really put thought into what he said. We are gonna miss Greg and the city is gonna miss Greg for one of the main reasons is that he just brought so much to the table. And you know, for all of us who are, who've had the experience of chairing committees. You know, you have this sort of moments of, of infallibility or, or like you just don't really know what you're doing. And that was never, ever what any of us thought of Greg. I, when I was like, oh, that's a man who knows what to do. Like, I'm not gonna like really get into this, because like Greg got. Exuded confidence. And yet the man appreciated a good bit, because right in front of there for the mayor's ball a couple of years ago, I remember we put together a video. You, you put together a video and I remember Greg got us all to do like jazz hands. And, and there's a picture, and I actually, um uh Jen McMar posted it recently and I was reminded. And it's like hilarious, because I mean, we're doing like, you know, jazz hands right there. And it was ridiculous looking and it was so much fun and it was totally Greg's instinct. Like everyone said, he was someone who was deeply thoughtful. I, I was like Jalen and I had gone through texting Greg as well. He sent me a lovely note when my grandfather passed away three years ago. And it was just really thoughtful. And I, I hadn't asked for it. I think I maybe had. Put a post on Facebook or something and, you know, he just, it was just a really nice note. And. I didn't, I wasn't as close with Greg as a lot of other people, you know, but the fact that he took the time to do that and made me feel a whole lot better. And it meant something different when it came from Greg Burnett. You know. One of the things that really struck me about the wonderful funeral service yesterday. Was that this was a full man with so many different aspects of his life, who was a loved man. Who was cherished by many, who had deep, deep relationships and ties. And I gotta be honest, I'm sitting there and thinking, I didn't know this man at all. I knew a part of this man. I didn't know enough about this man. And for as fleeting as life is, where you really don't know when it's gonna end. I, and I, Nora and I had a conversation about this, you know, recently about taking the time to do the simple things and getting to know each other. You know, we participate in this professional relationship with work. And we know some stuff about each other's lives, but I gotta be honest, I don't think we know enough about each other. I don't think we really take the time to really learn, because as I was sitting there and especially there was a letter. That his nephew, should absolutely be an announcer on television, um read from his friend Otis Jennings. And they read this letter and I was astounded. I was astounded, because it was such a powerful letter. What a powerful relationship. And, and just, there was such depth to Greg that ran in so many different directions. And I realized that I barely knew him. And I regret that. That's a regret. I wish I knew him better. I wish I had the chance to know him better. And I hope that from Greg's life is a big lesson about our own. Uh taking that time, making that effort, because if there's one thing that Greg Burnett was, he's an effort guy. So that's what I'm gonna be thinking about, when I think about the legacy of Greg Burnett. He died way too young. But he lived a full life. He lived a powerful life. I, I said this kinda right after he dead, uh he died. I still believe it. This is a man whose impact on Norwalk, it is not an overstatement to say it will last for generations. This was a consequential man. And I was lucky to get to spend a little time with him. And I wish I got to spend more.
Mr. Wiggins.
Hello, everyone. Um so I had a, a, a different experience with Greg than everyone, I'm pretty sure on the council. Greg did not like me and I couldn't understand why. Um because I, I really thought highly of him. I thought he was a very smart and, and if anyone ever know me, I, I said Greg is very smart. He's very qualified. And he's, you know, I, I admire his brains, but he did, he just didn't like me. But I, I was saying in the beginning, before I got on the council, uh he, we um had a shark take event and he was one of the judges. Uh along with Josh and then um he, after, after that event, he came in, he spoke to our class. One of our groups some years ago. But when I got, started getting involved in uh politics, it just, he didn't like me. And the sucky part is. I, I didn't get a chance to ask him why, right? And I think that's important, because I think sometimes. We, we have these notions about people um and. No, it's, it's funny, but it's serious, right? And sometimes we, we have this notion about people and we think we know people until we really start. Sitting down and getting to know them. And I didn't have opportunity to do that. And it sucks, because. If we were to talk and he would have got to know me, he probably would have liked me. And most people that sit down and talk to me. You know, and get to know who I am. I'm not who people might say I am or people think I am. I'm really. A down-to-earth individual that's passionate, just like everyone else on this council um for our community, right? So it sucks, but um it, it's a sad story, because he has a family and to Josh's point, he's gone way too soon, so. Um but I, I wish I had an opportunity to uh to speak to him and for him to get to know me who, for who I am.
Hi, uh, am I the last? Hopefully not. Um yeah, I, it's. I think my best times with Greg were um went working on finance and he, he just. In his great way, did not deal with fools. When, when people said things that were foolish and he would just kind of roll his eyes and, and have this bemused expression. And he would just kind of look at me, you know, like, oh yeah, you, you know, this is going on, right? And, and I used to, I just love the way he wasn't really overt and he didn't make it about himself. He really um. Pulled people up in a way that made them feel, you know, watching in the way, especially with young people. Um made them feel like they were doing it on their own with just a little help from Greg, but knowing full well that it was actually, you know. A, a heavy lift that he was doing for a lot of people. So I really appreciated that. And my own personal thing, I loved being able to, I loved how he showed up at like almost everything. You know, you, you knew he was gonna be there in his really calm um lovely way. And he was always dressed to the nines. I, I loved that too. And I always, I talk about, I used to love to talk to him about his um. He always had his cuffs, you know, with his initials embroidered on them. And, and I just thought, he really, to me, it was, he was. Focused on the details of things, like he really paid attention. He didn't just go through life and, and not. Think that details were important. And I really enjoyed, because I love details. I love talking to him about it. Uh and I really will miss that about him, being able to really dig into some of the details and, and the little minutia. And anyway, I will, I will miss him enormously. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been a really, really, really tough time, um losing my best buddy. Nicole, thank you. You hit the nail on the head. He has been the backbone of this council. And you know, my buddy and my partner and, and Juan, thank you for a really good laugh. Cause you are right. He, he, he just didn't mince words and, and he really let you know how, how he felt. And the, and um Heather, you know, I'm, I'm on first names here tonight. I, I hope you'll forgive me. Those eyes, those looks, he, he had plenty of them. Uh oftentimes, I, you know, he would, I would catch his eye. It was all I could do to keep him laughing um at some of those um expressions of his. So I, I gotta, I gotta talk about the candy thing. I gotta talk about the candy thing. So um, so. When we were first serving together, we sat over there side by side. And that's something that, you know, unless one of us was sitting in the seat, we were always side by side. And after a couple of months. I'm just, you know, getting used to being on the council and I'm reading my agenda and all of a sudden there's two pieces of candies. And I'm like, okay, there we do it again the next week. And then it became a thing. It became a thing between us. And so um. It, it was always done at a surreptitious moment. Whenever we could sneak it, we would just put two pieces of candy there. Um and so you all have tonight, there's two pineapple high shoes at his seat. This was his favorite. They're not easy to find, uh but everyone got one tonight as well. And of course, I'll eat mine surrepticiously at some point in time. Another thing, you know, we, we. Another thing, you know, we, we, we got so, so, so close. And what another thing that bonded us together is one day he whips out a purple pen. And, you know, he's, I don't know if he was using it or I don't remember if he was, uh, handing it to me to borrow. But I was like, you use a purple pen? Because I used a purple pen as a teacher to grade all my papers. I hated red. You know, I, it always seemed like so like, like scary and, and, you know, uh, I don't know. I just hated red. So I always used purple. So I was like, oh, we, we, we got something going here, the, the, um, with the purple. And he always wore his purple shirts and I, you know, a lot of us are wearing purple tonight, you know, the purple orchid, uh, in honor of, of his, you know, dressing to the T's and always the, you know, and the way the purple showed off his eyes. That's just, you know, those, those eyes, you know, it was Susan Weissowitz who said yesterday at the funeral, God, he had some beautiful eyes. You know how you work spouses? We were each other's work spouses. That's, that's, that's the and as spouses do, we had our ups and downs. We broke up once. It was pretty tough. But, uh, you know, we had such a, a deep connection and respect for each other. And we laughed together so many times that we always came back to the rock that was our relationship. He was stubborn. He was stubborn. And I know, you know, a lot of times I would hear from, from a lot of you at the table, what, what's with Greg? Sometimes even Mary, you would be, what's with Greg? And I would say Greg's being Greg. Because he was stubborn, because he was so committed and so convicted in always striving for excellence, for professionalism, and always doing his very, very best for the people. That was what Greg Burnett was. And he was stubborn in that. And, you know, he expected you to come along with him. And, you know, Mayor, I wanna thank you for mentioning yesterday that Greg would have been an excellent mayor. I, a lot of us have, you know, we all always thought, oh, Greg would wanna run for mayor. Greg would wanna run for mayor. And wondered why he wasn't running, but it was, it was the track and field. It was his goal of, of officiating in the Olympics in 2028 was what he wanted to do. And, you know, I know that, that he had a lot of conflict around that. But that was what his goal was. And so the timing just wasn't right. But he, the professionalism, the excellence, the experience, you know, his experience at IBM, his consulting, everything, he would have made an excellent mayor and the city would have been in excellent hands with him. So I, I really want to thank you for pointing that out yesterday. You know, and I just wanna thank those of you who have reached out to me, um, here on this table because you know, I, it's, it's been really, really tough to lose my best buddy. So thank you all.
And I do wanna give a shout out to Michelle with Matthews, who was by liaison with the family. We got a beautiful letter today. I'll share, uh, from Desiree, his daughter-in-law. The family was just really, really so happy with what we did for our combat. And, uh, she would, the IT department, but Larry doesn't work for a center. Larry came on his own time to make sure we got zoomed, to make sure we had the, the, uh, scrolling, uh, screen and the video, the audio. Joyce, uh, so much, uh, help and, uh, and let's not forget Irene. Irene, did you wanna make a comment?
Greg was very special to us, to our team. He, he was just so kind and treated us as equals, um, really showed his respect. He really, really.
And, uh, if anybody's interested and want, and wants to raise a glass to Greg, uh, tonight, I will buy the first Burnett.
And we like passing ordinance to make every restaurant.
For everybody this evening, if you wish to join us, uh, my, I, I thank my wife for, uh, naming the Burnett. We went out to dinner and she said, what's that drink that Greg had? And I said, Amaretto warrants you. She goes, oh, yeah, yeah. She goes, we have to call that the Burnett. And I said, well, we will. So anytime I'm challenging you, so anytime you go in to a restaurant and you want that drink, you ask for a Burnett. And I guarantee the waitress, the waiter, the bartender will not have any idea what you're talking about. But if you tell them what it is, from that point on, that becomes the Burnett.
Yeah.
Again, thank you all for sharing your thoughts. Greg, with this. Ms. Smith?
All right, onto the consent calendar, which tonight will be read by Mr. Freyr.
Okay. Uh, A is Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs. A Corporation Council Executive Session Authorization to Settle Claim Authorized Mayor Harry W. Rilling to Enter into Indoor Execute the Participation and Release Form and any other agreements and or other documents necessary to effectuate the proposed settlement of the defendants, uh, Alvin, uh, Emmanuel, X, Akima, Victor, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus. Number seven, common council committees, Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs. Number one, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter your agreement, use of CAF pasture beach and immediate surrounding grounds by Project Purple where their steps for a cure to be held Saturday, October 25th, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Set up time 7:00 AM with tear down 1:30 PM, approximately 350 people. Number two, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement of use of Washington Street Plaza and immediate surrounding grounds of the City of Newark Department of Economic and Community Development for their Halloween night fair to be held on Saturday, October 25th, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Set up time 9:00 AM, tear down by 11:55 PM, approximately 5,000 people. Number three, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a sole source purchase order for an amount not to exceed $77,210.91 to Aviv, uh, Solutions Inc. for the purchase of 29 AED units with a five-year monitoring contract from accounts so noted. Number four, authorize the purchasing agent to increase the existing purchase order, number 200749 issued to Stan Tech, Stan Tech Consulting for an amount not to exceed $48,000 to Broad River Field Design Services Funding from its own. Number five, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a sole source purchase order for the amount not to exceed $48,900 to Alter and Grid Mid Company for the purchase of the ABI Force Z23 HLT Ball Field Laser Grader, uh, from the account so noted. Number six, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to extend the existing contract with act, active net to an additional three-year term for an amount not to exceed $28,875 from accounts so noted. Authorize the purchase agent to issue all source purchase order in the amount not to exceed $149,822.44 to O'Brien and Sons for the purchase and installation of playground, of playground equipment, uh, at Woodward Avenue Park, pricing, uh, from the 2025, uh, M H E C, M C 16, B 14 pricing contract, accounts so noted. B Public Safety and General Government, authorize the purchasing agent to authorize the purchase for utilizing the cooperative purchasing agreement, the M H E C, M C 16, B 11 to McCann Systems LLC for the Norwalk Fire Department E O C operated project for amount not to exceed $122,514, accounts so noted. C Community Services Comprehensive Suicide Prevention Grant. A authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept grant funds in the United Way of Connecticut for the aid public health approach to comprehensive suicide prevention in Connecticut programs in the amount of $40,000 for the period September 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2026. B authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, and amendments as may be necessary to implement a public health approach to comprehensive suicide prevention in Connecticut program for the period September 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2026. Number two, per capita grant in aid funding. A authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, amendments needed to apply for and receive per capita grant in aid funding from the Connecticut Department of Public Health in the amount of $160,599.55 for the period July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026. B authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, amendments as may be necessary to implement the per capita grant, in aid grant for the period, uh, July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. D Economic and Community Development. Number one, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a contract amendment of Colonial Concrete and Asphalt Paving in accordance with T N P 2023 dash three contract agreement to include additional work for the construction of new concrete sidewalks and curbing along the Eastley curb of Rowland Avenue from Rowland Chain Station to Devil's Garden Road in the amount not to exceed $266,000, accounts so noted. E Land Use and Building Management. Uh, number one, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with Antonazi Associates PC for architectural design services for the Westport Avenue Fire Station, Station Number Four. Renovation and Expansion Project for a total not to exceed $311,200, accounts so noted. And B authorize the design contingency of the Antonazi Associates PC for the Station Number Four renovation expansion project for a total not to exceed $31,120, accounts so noted. That concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Freyr. You've all heard the consent calendar. Um, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously. And back to you.
Okay, that brings aside of seven F one, uh, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. So the purpose of this global covenant of mayors for climate and energy is to provide a voluntary, non-binary collaborative framework for cities like Norwalk to track emissions, assess climate risks, set realistic goals and share progress while retaining full control. By joining Norwalk positions itself alongside thousands of other municipalities worldwide in a global partnership that strengthens our credibility, expands access to resources and best practices, improves our chances of securing funding and also helps and possibly exceed the objectives of the Paris Climate Agreement. Uh, to say a few words about the actual covenant, the Global Covenant Covenant is a world's largest international alliance for cities and local governments committed to fighting climate change, strengthening climate resilience, and ensuring access to sustainable energy. It connects thousands of municipalities across the globe in a partnership rooted in accountability and shared solutions, giving local leaders the tools and network to act boldly on climate while retaining full control over how to implement solutions. Uh, many of the requirements such as emissions, inventory resilience, assessments for the climate plan have already are in the works or some of these things have actually been implemented. And lastly, on behalf of the council, I know Jody or our sustainability director is here. I do wanna thank you, Jody, for your dedication, for charting a course that will benefit generations to come in Norwalk. Since your arrival, your expertise has been invaluable, helping the city grasp both the urgency of climate action, but also the, uh, opportunities. So by guiding us into the global covenant of mayors for climate and energy, you've positioned Norwalk in worldwide partnership. So thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for signing this. So thank you.
Anybody has any questions? We have Mr. Trent here, Mr. Lopez. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jody, for being here. And Jody has been a real good, a, a real asset to, uh, the city for the work she's doing and what she's done in a very short time and she's been here. So again, thank you. Okay, that brings us to seven G one, Mr. Freyr.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we'd like to present, we have a bond sale that recently took place that, uh, was very, we were able to obtain a very favorable, uh, rate, uh, that, uh, and Mr. Schmidt will, uh, explain to us a little bit, give us a little bit of an overview in a second. I also just wanted to mention that I asked this item to be put on tonight's agenda because, um, the resulting, um, favorable price or rate that we got for these bonds is really a tribute to, um, the late chairman of the Finance and Claims Committee, Mr. Burnett. Um, it's through his, his perseverance, his, is, um, always attention to detail, uh, that we were able and to maintain the high quality of financial management that, um, we have today. As a result of that, we're able to achieve, to achieve these favorable ratings when we do go to the market to fund growth for the city. So if, uh, we don't mind, Mr. Schmidt, can you please give us a brief overview?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And, uh, thank you for that. Uh, thank you all and, um, I just wanna say that, uh, as you all know, and has been pointed out, uh, a number of times, I know much, much better than I do, how seriously Mr. Burnett took his duties. Um, and as the, as a chair of the Finance Committee, he did the same thing. Uh, he cared deeply about the bond rating, um, as one of the major measures of how the city's performing financially. And he always, he wanted to understand the, the inner workings of it and get involved in the process. So he was a part of, a part of our team that presented to the rating agencies. Um, so we presented to them, met with them on August 21st. It was S and P and Moody's were the two rating agencies. Uh, and, and I think I'm sure that, uh, Mr. Burnett is happy, uh, to know that we did get the AAA rating reaffirmed, AAA rating, uh, with a stable outlook. Uh, along with Mr. Burnett, we had, uh, the finance from finance. We had me and myself and Tom Ellis. Uh, and then equally as important to the financial aspect of this is economic development. And so, um, along with the, the finance, uh, crew, we had, uh, Jay Hibansky, Steve Kleppen and Sabrina Godeski. And then, uh, we also had our, our financial advisor, Bill Lindsay, uh, from Munistat, who was in, in on those as well. And he, he's, uh, done, done a fantastic job. He helps coordinate, uh, all of our activities leading up to the bond sale and through the development of the official statement, uh, that goes out. So that was a, he, he's a, a big help and a big asset to us. So my, my portion of the presentation, the financial portion of it, it deals with a lot, a lot of different aspects, including obviously the financials, the budget, the status of the budget, the future of the budget projections, the future of our debt projections, property assessments, tax collection data, liabilities, debt. And then on the economic development side, their focus, they go into quite a bit of detail, actually, in talking to the rating agencies about different developments that are going on in the city, to give them flavor of, of how active things are. And it's, it's definitely a, a benefit as we present to them. So that's, that's what yielded the AAA rating. And then the bond sale took place, as Mr. Frayer mentioned last. It took place on September 3rd. We did fantastic. We had an historic number of bids. We had 15 bids from 15 different investment banks, which is, it's the greatest number that I've ever been a part of and the, the, the largest number in the, and at least the last 10 years of the city of Norwalk. So that was a, a great showing. And with all of that competition, of course, it led to the, the low rate that Mr. Frayer mentioned, which was a 3.69%. We, Bill Lindsey continues to track any, any activity that happens in the market beyond that, beyond the, the date of our sale and even before it. And, you know, some of the comparable, some of the comps of municipalities that are in this region have been higher than the rate that we got, usually about about 20 basis points or so higher than the rate that we received. So we're happy to that, happy about that. And it definitely helps to just reaffirm the, the job that the, that the city has done and, and that that, all the work that went into doing the bond sale. It was, the, the total sale was $53 million in GO bonds. And they, they didn't, I'd certainly be remiss if I didn't point out challenges, which I think we all know, it's, it's come up in the past. The fund, the fund balance is the challenge. And especially with Moody's, it became a conversation with Moody's during, you know, particularly became a a conversation during our presentation with them. And so that, the fact that we had in the FY25 budget, $8 million that was budgeted and will need to be drawn down and also, and, and more at the end of '25, by the time we close the books. And we have another 8 million that is, is probably going to be drawn down this year as well. We're hoping that with some, the timing of some of the revenue that we didn't receive in '25 that we will receive in '26, that that will be helpful and help to minimize the amount of fund balance that we're going to have to draw down and hopefully, you know, be able to continue with the, with the tradition as it's been in the past where we may budget fund balance, but hopefully don't, don't end up using it. So those are the highlights and I'm happy to take any questions. We, the, the product that we produce is called the Official Statement. It's basically a prospectus of this, of the city, has all kinds of really good information. All that, all the net document and a bunch of others are posted on the, on the finance website. So if you have a chance to look at that, you can look at that. I can also forward you the, the credit reports from the two credit rating agencies and if you're interested in seeing that. So happy to take any questions.
Question, your comments.
Question. Can you expound a little bit about the fund balance situation? Because I think that that's a little bit of different news for us.
Sure. The, the FY25 budget had $8 million of a drawdown in it. And we're, we're going to have to draw down that 8 million. We're, right now, we're projecting about a $3 million deficit in the FY25 budget. We'll know for sure when we, before we close out, close out the book. So to the extent that that deficit remains, that would have to be, the fund balance would have to cover that amount. So we're, we're looking at somewhere around $11 million of a fund balance drawdown. What the rating agencies are, are looking for is on a, on a GAAP basis that we're at 20% of the, of the overall budget. So the fund balance amount is that 20% of the overall budget. We're at, we're at about, before, before FY25, we were at about $86 million. So it's going to drop down probably to about 75 by the time we close the books. And that, it keeps us just a hair above the, that 20% threshold the way Moody's calculates it. And so that, that helped to preserve the AAA rating. It's not a guarantee. If we, if we go below that, if we go below that level, it's not a guarantee that we're going to get downgraded or that there would be a negative outlook. But based on, based on what we experienced in the presentation this year and based on the experience of our, our financial advisor, Bill Lindsey, right after the, right after the rating presentations, between that and the time they issued their, their ratings, his, we, we were about 50/50 on whether or not there would be a negative outlook. And, and he, you know, he has a ton of experience, works with a lot of municipalities. And so he, you know, he, he was, he was 50/50 on whether or not there would be a negative outlook from Moody's. S&amp;P has a different approach. And so we, we thought we were on pretty solid ground with S&amp;P. So, but we did, you know, ended up in, in a good place. But it's something that we're, we're continuing to be concerned about and trying to do what we can to preserve it for this, for the new year that we're in now.
So cautious times.
Cautious times. And, and it, so what does it mean if we get downgraded? It's, you know, it's not, it's difficult to say what, what, what would happen if there's a downgrade or if there's a, a negative outlook to us. It's definitely going to be a higher rate. It'll be a higher rate on the bonds, which is, which will typically add anywhere from, you know, hundreds of thousands to potentially millions of dollars over the period of the bonds. So there, there are consequences to it. And there's a, a real benefit to keeping the AAA rating.
But they also recognize the fact that we're investing in our infrastructure. And that's a long-term investment, which will pay dividends down the road. So once we have a, well, we have a strategic plan in place for bringing that down, down to an acceptable, acceptable level. So I think we're in pretty good shape. And as Jared said, you know, getting 15 bids when we normally would get maybe 10, that shows the fiscal strength of the city. So I think that also.
I have one more question. Do we have any other things that we imagine that we would want to use the fund balance for in this fiscal year that might be a drain? Or is that the extent of it?
This year, we're going to wait to see how the, how the year plays out at this time. I, I don't see anything right now. We are still, we, we just finished doing the retro calculations for, for salaries based on new collective bargaining agreements. So we're still, you know, it's, it's a new contract and we're still trying to see how that's going to play out and what, what effect that's going to have on, on the salaries that we budgeted. But given, we, we, they did a pretty good job budgeting for, budgeting the, the salaries within the department budgets and also setting money aside in contingency. So, but there, there were definitely some, some larger increases in, in the collective bargaining agreements related to salaries. But nothing, nothing, nothing specific that I can see right now.
It's not bad news, but it's caution. We have to, I, I think it's more, I don't even want to say caution. I think it's more that we have to maintain basically the same approach that we've had instituted controls that we have and maybe even strengthen some of the controls that we do have in place today. And when we've had conversations about other cities that are our size, it's, it's really refreshing to find out that, that we're in much better shape than a lot of other cities. And it's only because of that, I think being, and, and I like, and one of the reasons why I brought this up is I think this is the way Greg thought. Greg was very conservative and I think as, as Nicole had said the other day, that they say just follow the money and it'll take care of itself. So I want to thank you very much for coming in this evening and explaining this to us. I think it's, it's, it's it's phenomenal when, as you've mentioned, 15, 15 investment banks coming to bid on, on the little Norwalks bonds and getting, and we get one of the lowest rates either before or after that bond sale. It's, it's pretty, it's, it's a real feather in the cap.
Yeah. And the mayor, mayor talked about some of the other positive things where we, and we've already taken some other good steps to, to help us, especially during this, during the phase in period of their revale where, you know, things like the, the, the tax sale on, on, on blight properties and properties with zoning issues. We were the first, first city to do that in the state. And the, and the legislation, the statute was adopted because of us and because of the work of our legislative delegation. So that's bringing in revenue. We have the, we're starting to see revenue come in now from what we talked about, the registration of motor vehicles and identifying those vehicles that should be registered in the city but are not. And so we're starting to see that, that revenue to come in. So we're looking at, you know, turning over all the stones and, and looking at ways that we can find, find more revenue to help us during these times.
And I give a lot of credit to Jared and his team, picked right up where we needed to be. You know, I, I can't think of another city that has the strength in their pension plans that are OPEB that the city of Norwalk has. And a lot of them will end up borrowing from their pension funds. And that just gets them in a lot of trouble. And also, as we're talking about tonight, a lot of people say, well, take money out of the fund balance to pay for this, take money out of the fund balance to pay for that. Well, you know what happens? We have to be very cautious about that because they're looking for a percentage of the fund balance of our, of our overall budget. And we want to make sure that we don't go below that threshold because then we're in a, in a whole different ballgame. So again, credit to Jared, Chitsumay, and Tom Ellis, and Lisa Biagorelli, who is always after the money. We just had, and for the blight settlements that we have now that we can get because that's a new state statute. But we just got a tremendous amount of money for that as well. So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, Mr. Seid?
Yeah, I think everybody, but I think just for everything you did, just one last time, just, thank you, Greg.
This item does not need to be voted on, and I will turn the floor over to Ms. Shanahan.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Imagine I have all in favor. All opposed. It is 8:54. We are adjourned. Thank you all.